In to order and have a recall, please? Or just mark us out? Okay, all present. Okay, and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
The Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible. With liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. The delay took me by surprise. Okay, we have approval of the agenda. Is there anything else we want to add concerning finances? The only thing I could think of was perhaps to talk about the what? We don't have a final number, but the drainage districts are going to cost us.
Yeah, I don't have any of that information.
We don't have any numbers and we, okay.
No.
Well, let's just have a three, just a brief discussion against bringing up the fact that we're going to have to find some dollars and maybe foresee any questions we might have.
Now, do you want to do that at the end of the agenda?
Okay, well, I can do it right now. We can do it as, just move everything down, that's fine. And you mean not as an agenda item, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I would want to have a brief discussion. Let's just leave it at three and have just a brief discussion. That would be all I would want to add to it.
Move to approve is amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, 3-0. Public comment? Is there any comments want to be made publicly before we begin? See none? Okay, we'll move on to our first item, which is the approval of the minutes from April 20th, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 20th, 2022. Support.
Okay, do you have any discussion, any questions, Adam? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post? Then we'll move on to the review of the 2021 audit. We have Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Peacock.
Steve Peacock on video as he's away.
And you have a document from him as well as Mr. Gallagher provided to you.
Yes, we have two documents. And John, do you want to come up and so you can answer any questions that we have? So we have this issue. Steve is on line to help answer his part in the finding and how that happened and John's explanation of it. So who wants to begin on this?
May I should just maybe John, since we just got this? John, if you could review this with us?
That'd be a great idea.
And then we'll let Steve go. And like I said, Steve, I made copies of your email. It's been passed out.
Okay, so thanks, John.
So presented a letter to you today with attached documentation that I think is referenced to show that you we have. And we've had this count for a while. So let me just get into my letter.
Can I ask you what? I just have one question for you going. Steve, did you start our audit process in February here at the county?
Well, the audit starts meaningfully in, say, November, December, planning this generally internally. Field work, if the county has typically done late February, March, here's the timeframe, and then the wrap up in April and May.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
So, dear questioners, please allow me to address your current regarding Mr. Peacock's ordering regarding the district court cash account and question, which led me to believe that there was material weakness. To clear the confusion below, you will find just some of the items documented by the auditors and stored in our archives. I've got evidence that the account was opened up on May 1st, 1975, Empire National Bank. This account was then again modified in 2011 with signatures from Ms. Lauren Cassidy and Cindy Schab. And the authorization was from Michelle Crocker and Tom Dempel on that resolution. I have bank statements and reconciliations done by the district court, verified with the Treasury Office for Council of the District Court Auditors. Multiple years of audits showing the district court odd accounts in the books. I've got an email from March 17th, 2020, from Jennifer Doig.
2022?
22. Explaining how Fund 799 was being administered, which was included in a transaction history report showing auditor adjustments. This evidence shows that it was being adjusted annually by our auditors through 2012 and again in 2019 and 2020. I also have bank confirmations demonstrating the account as being listed. I'll go into each piece. While I'm not sure how Andrew Robinson is not aware of this account that has been audited throughout the years, I believe, of course, it actually would have been with our model protocol, meeting the team to investigate the discrepancy as well as creating an action plan in the future. Unfortunately, this has not happened. Furthermore, I feel the model material finding would have been listed on separate pages, which I have provided you guys copies of 2017 and 2018 audits. First one, a reference to 2017-002, cash seed segregation duties, significant efficiency in internal control of financial reporting, which is a audit finding listed as a separate page and not included with our general finding that we get through the year. Additionally, those are 2018-002, timely recording and reconciliation of Crownfield account, material weakness in internal control of the financial reporting. Both of those are listed as separate findings. Acknowledging the discrepancy of the treasurer's office has made the necessary changes in procedure to ensure that monitoring entries are made to adjust the district court account as recommended by auditing council. So we're not in dispute. The first page in my backup is the brief history from Lauren Cassidy, showing her series of events as she knows it. She lists that the account was opened at the end of 2076, 317, 2011. The old account listed here, I think, at 6650, was closed on January 31st, 2012 because the banks started using different sequencing for its bank accounts. The original noted here was through Empire National Bank in 1975. In 2021, I was added as a signature on the bank account so that I can counter sign it, Lauren's gone or Cindy's gone. The next page is a copy of the resolution from 2011. This is what Conyton is required to have on file in order to list the authorized signatories and to note where the authority came from. And in this case, it was signed on the 15th day of February, 2011, by Tom Dempel, Michelle Crocker. Again, just showing that this account's been here and has been being used for a certain time. I did draw a question on the account signature card from 2011 because it has tax ID of that Grand Travis County. This is my first time reviewing it. I've had a chance to talk with our auditors regarding that and whether or not it still needs to be listed and our financial statements being that it's a Grand Travis account, which I'll find out more in the future. The next page is just bank reconciliation, which is something through what is supplied by Mr. Peacock. These are the statements that district court put them down and verified at the beginning and balances. And they know that in our records. This was asked of us in, I believe, 2016 by district court auditors to have a third set of eyes when we were bank statements and make sure that they are reconciling by time of basis and their auditors are separate from the county auditors. The next couple of pages are these pages that are taken out of our audit, showing that the district court has been listed as a fund with cash balance in 2017, 2018, excuse me, 2015, 2016 audits. The next page is just a letter to the auditors from Ms. Wiki, explaining how the account had been manually adjusted and approved throughout the year and it was being adjusted on an annual basis by the auditors. Behind that is a transaction history report showing those changes on an annual basis. And then lastly, is a bank confirmation showing that we've had this on our banking account since I've been here and providing it to the auditors for them to confirm our bank balances. Not a good read, Mr. Peacock's email. Not disputing the fact that there was a material change to the fund account. I was unaware that it would be a finding. But nonetheless, we've taken the proper force to ensure that next year this is handled similarly to that road commission. So we're going to start balancing that on an annual basis. And the reason why I wasn't here to respond to questions the day of the audit presentations, I was upshaking and I was unaware of any material finding that could be of cause or concern.
So you were not told that there had been a finding?
I was told that this was an adjustment because of the scope of it had changed from a small amount or amount to a significant amount where we have one bond, I think, that is worth $150,000 or one individual. So that created the materiality of the issue that jumped significantly just over nine foot to the size of the account.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions right now? We'll get Steve's answer. I had one, unless you want to start.
And John and I had talked and addressed some questions that he's restated those today, so I'm all set.
So this account is for district court? And it's been there for, what is it used for generally?
For the files of the magistrate court.
Okay. That's, so if they get, if somebody has to take out a bond, that money goes in there? Is that what, like, who makes the transactions? There was one, it looks like, for $600 and some dollars. Who does that? That's all done through court?
That's all done through court.
District court? Okay.
They have their own financial software and their own, I guess, 400 system, if you will, that they keep track and do the reporting out of that.
And so what is the, so this bond, this $150,000 bond was larger than usual? Is that what? So it was, can you tell us anything about it, why it?
No.
Okay, so they had $150,000 bond that dropped in?
Correct.
Okay, and this account is, did you say it's under Grand Travis County's tax ID number?
That's what I gathered from digging into the history. I'd say the renewal or the change of account that occurred in 2011 references Grand Travis County EIA, which I don't know if it makes any much.
Okay, well, that may be a different question. Okay.
Linda?
Yes, go ahead.
Are you?
Go ahead.
I raised a question last week. Where's John? We received the audit, not the board, but the county received it in May. Had you had access to it?
Yeah.
But even reading the audit, you were not aware that there was a material finding?
There was one material finding that we always have, which is 1-01, and there was some notations in it, but because it was aggregated, I didn't think it was significant. Where?
That is why you're suggesting that two separate entries.
Did you have any questions right now? Okay, so Steve, what say you on this issue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe I editorialized what I wanted to say in my email supporting documentation I sent to Chad this morning. I believe that the commentary that I made off the team before about the account not being on the GL is not the case. When I looked at the adjusting journal entry, the entry said to record cash not reported on the books. That was where my comment, the spirit and where my comment came from after talking with the team. What actually transpired, this account, as John mentioned, has been around for a long period of time, has always been under our, we call trivial number for materiality. Keep in mind that auditors' levels of materiality are very different than internal accounting materiality. Our new IRS issued report of financial statements, we are required to issue a report that says they are not materially inaccurate. We rely on the concept of materiality and go through several different iterations of materiality for each individual fund group or county. This account had never really had any meaningful activity. It had never passed over a threshold to be of concern. So we would take the bank rec and we would bring that in the treasurer's office. If it was off by $600 bucks, $400 bucks, we would pass on that. This is what we do as a functional audit. It is not the auditor's responsibility to reconcile bank statement. The fact that it's not part of our audit engagement. The way that we reported the combined findings, I would, I could entertain the option if this happens in the future, segregate them out into two separate findings. But meaningful, meaningfulness behind material weakness, if you think about that from a commissioner's perspective, material weakness is exactly what it says. Material in nature, so this is $155,000, and it's a weakness in the internal control system. I believe I sent you a bank reconciliation that was prepared and signed off on, I believe, January the 4th. And looking at the cash or papers that we began to work on, the county was in the middle of March, is when they were signed off by our staff. So this was clearly done long. The bank reconciliation was clearly performed long before the auditor showed up and began doing the testing of the accounts. So the auditor shows up, finds the balances off by $155,000 change, and began the process of finding out what's going on. So the audit team went, first of all, the treasurer's office, and was not able to ascertain enough information about that account. Paul Matz, who's a fellow partner of mine, brought in Jen's Wiki for a discussion about this account. Jen then went to the district court office, as you can see in that letter and email I sent out today. There's all sorts of internal controls about the deposits. They get down to the treasurer's office in a locked bag. Treasurer's office takes it to the bag, making you routinely for other deposits and so forth and reconciles the account. Where we have, where this develops into a material weakness, is you have a document that has been signed that shows it is reconciled, the bank reconciliation by definition teaches a bank statement to a general ledger balance and it's signed off and you get that, it does balance. And then we roll into town and we find it's off by $155,000 change. So intuitively, auditors begin to be skeptical. That's one of the audit standards, is following appropriate audit skepticism. If I'm getting information from John or Chad or Michelle or anybody and it's not accurate, the skepticism level goes higher in the auditor's mind. And that is all part of training to be an auditor. And this particular item raised the level of skepticism we performed over cash procedures and over some other elements that came in from the treasurer's department. And we corrected, I think it was the road commission, John, the road commission got paid twice.
Yes.
Yes, so road commission got paid twice. We got a bad one, we got an account that doesn't balance from a bank statement. So if the auditor's a little nervous about that, that's the auditor's responsibility to be a little nervous. I shouldn't say nervous, I should say an elevated level of skepticism. So we have to perform additional procedures to make sure that we are comfortable that the ending result balances, whether they're cash, accounts receivable, revenues, expenses, liability, or so forth, the federal statement. So that is what we did here. And as a result, a finding yielded $155,000 in the cash and the $2.6 million in the bond refunding. Now, as I mentioned in my email, the bond refunding is not, this is not something that's abnormal. It's material, yes. It doesn't have, even one of these entries have a great material effect in the fund balance. So that's a good sign. It does not materially affect your fund balance. But when a company, a client goes through a bond refunding or a bond to pieces, out of 100 clients that do that, 99 of these clients call us and say, we want to have our September, our office, or whatever financial statements are presented to the board, accurate the next time they present it to the board. So we'll walk them through the contracts, we'll walk them through the necessary adjusting drill entries, and then we'll get it posted to the books internally rather than here and. So the number for the bond issue was a big number. I don't find great fault in anybody at the county for having not already goes on the books because honestly, if you don't spend any time doing this, you're probably not going to get it right. You've got to have your audit firm who does this stuff relatively routinely to get it accurate. So that one, I'm not losing a lot of steam over. The cash one, yep, we talked internally, that's a little bit of an issue. If the bank reconciliation had not been carried, for example, or there was nothing out there with this account, that's another thing. We have a signed bank statement that says it was reconciled to GL on the back of the top. So that raises our level of skepticism to the point where we had to elevate our testing for the year to make sure we got these balances accurate.
So did you know this was an ancient account Tuesday? Did I miss that? Did you mention?
I had presented to the board on Tuesday that it was not an account on the general ledger, and that was inaccurate. This account has been on the general ledger of the county. I think John says in '72, I look back to '18 and our work papers, 118, so it has been there. It's been around $4,000, $5,000 balance, does not rise over our materiality thresholds, spent a lot of time looking at.
I see, so that's.
Changes have been rather small.
I see, so that's why you've never mentioned it in previous audits, is it was just a small number? So it's kind of escaped under the wire, basically?
Correct.
Until it's.
You don't want us to come to you with every $14 and every $0.21 stuff that we fight off, otherwise that'd be in your conference table for hours.
Actually, Steve, you don't know me very well if you say that because I actually would probably want to know where every darn dime is. But yes, go ahead, Ty.
Thanks for being here, Steve. I have a question, I'm not sure how to ask it, but I feel like I need to ask it and not to put anybody on the spot, but I was told after the board meeting by one person that you were encouraged to find this material weakness by county staff. Is there any truth to that?
Commissioner Russell, I did not be swayed by anybody in the room you're sitting in right now or any staff member of the county to do something that I do not believe is professionally appropriate.
That would have been my answer, thank you.
I was not approached by anybody. I'll be out here today, looking at the documents that I was signed off on March 13th, and March, where'd it go? March 16th. And I didn't sign off on this or even look at the work papers until after Paul Matz would have been some time ago. The conclusion to record this as a material weakness was made by the staff and Paul on scene, and I concur with this treatment and having my concurrent evaluation of the work paper filed.
Thank you.
So as far as this being a tax ID number for Grand Travis County, Steve, what about that?
That's a wild one. I didn't know about that. If you look at the bank statement, it's addressed to Lulunon County. It comes up when we request a bank confirmation, we use both the David and federal ID number on our bank confirmations. And if this has a Grand Travis County federal ID number, that's a problem. I think, I still think you have a responsibility to report that on your financial statements because it's a Lulunon County district court, I know you're a combined court, I believe, but it's still a Lulunon County bank account. That federal ID number needs to be changed to the Lulunon County ID number. I'm stunned to hear that it's Grand Travis County.
Well, it sounds like it's always been that way.
Yeah.
I mean, to look back, it looks like it's always been, which is maybe the way that was set.
I doubt, I doubt, but Grand Travis County gives this bank statement, this bank statement was addressed to the government center and so today.
Well, we can.
Steve, I have confidence in you that based on your history working here, that our response to this finding will meet your expectations and that in 2022, that this will not be an issue.
I have 100% confidence that this will be resolved. Both of them, John, both, this cash deal and the bond refunding. I don't see, I don't see you doing it funding it the next several years with interest rates the way they are. But I will suspect that the next time you do that, you give us a call and say, I don't want to record this, to get it in here, and this bank reconciliation going forward will be reconciled with the pending, my guess.
So then, while it was trivial, the number raised, raised it to the level of being alerted, say, by the auditors. But all along, so all along have we been, has this been, it hasn't been noted in audits all those other years, correct? That we had this.
That's correct.
Yeah, so.
So for example, Commissioner Oliver, what would happen in a case like this would be? We would take, say, the 7/31/2018 bank statement that shows $4,600 on the bank statement and it's got $4,200 of the general ledger. That difference of $400, we will, as an audit firm, will pass on the investigation because it doesn't meet the materiality threshold. And we would expect that the reconciler of the bank statement will look for their due diligence to make sure that with every month that passes, these reconciling items are eventually memorialized in the general ledger, either at the bank balance or reconciled based on outstanding checks, outstanding deposits.
Okay. So I appreciate your comment that there's no great fault with the county on this. I guess now we can say that now we know? Is that fair statement? Yes, go ahead.
I see. I took office in 2013, and this was actively being monitored through 2012. I'm not shirking responsibility for it, but there was some confusion when I took over. And I assumed that this was a Grand Travis County account. And it was handled by their own auditors as they have told us many times. And we've had to assist them with their own audits. So part of my ignorance was to how this account could have been, but the non-known that should be on the general ledger, this is an easy issue to resolve.
Very self, okay, thank you for that, John. Okay. Very good. Do we have any other questions for John?
Because Jen is here, I think we ought to invite her if she had a big part in the audit. Jen, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Throw stones?
I'm not here to throw stones. I was very surprised when the auditors asked me why the cash was off $150,000. As Steve said, I did talk with the auditors. I did question why I was asking district courts. courts. They did mention that neither Darcy nor John knew the fund, or the, what was in its entirety, and so I did go ask Cindy, as I believe the email stays to you. I'm not going to throw stones. I know I do have a different banking background. If this had been within the clerk's office, as in my circuit court, we can do it monthly. I am hoping that what John's saying, this is done annually. I would recommend that it's looked at monthly and to see what that ledger balance is, so that when this gentleman is arraigned or the bond goes away, that you take that $150,000 off of our ledger as soon as that happens, because that is what you, what you would do, we would do that in circuit court. I did mention to John and Darcy, and it was a particular day, you know, you're in audit, you're, you know, frustrations high, so forth, I did mention this was material. I let them know that it was a material finding, it was $150,000 off in cash. I did also let them know about the bonds, and I also let them know that it was newly material with the road commission payment. So I understand that there might be some confusion on what is in that finding, but for the last couple of years, it is more work for our auditors to separate those than it is for them to lump them in. And we find that, as in the previous years, the clerks and the treasurers, since it was a combination of those elected officials doing those duties, that it worked well being just one finding, and that it was discussed, you know, how to put it forward and, and correct those. I am disappointed, I mean, you know, it, it happens. You know, I mean, I talked to Darcy about the, of the road commission. Accidents happen in bookkeeping. But I can tell you, I've done this 20 years. You never want to be sitting where John's sitting, ever, ever. And that's one thing that I will tell you, I would never want to be in that seat, and I do my due diligence to make sure I'm not there. And so I did, I would, I'm saddened that this happened. I was very confused the first time they told me I was $150,000, because the relationship between the clerk's office and the treasurer's office is that then bank statements have been done together, and also that the administrator signs off. I don't know if you're finance director, if you're going to continue that, I would suggest you do. And in this regard, that John would give that reconciliation to the finance director, and at the end of the month, the finance director would say, you know, do we want to change the sum of the ledger this month? Do we want to adjust it? Do we just only do it at the end of the year? You know, as you're looking at, like he stated, what he does with the road commission. The situation I have is the road commission is a component unit, just like Roundfield and just like Land Bank. The ledger of your district court-
Before we give down to procedure, and say, "We're going to handle this monthly."
Okay, I'm sorry, I came in, I thought I heard yearly like road commission, I'm sorry.
No, road commission's done monthly.
Okay, so that was my mistake, I'm sorry, I thought I heard yearly. Okay. So yes, monthly, then you would do a, 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 actuate those months.
So this, this account starts, was opened or began before you were born, so you probably don't know the answer.
Yes.
But do you know how it's a tax ID number for Grand Trenches County all these years?
My guess is from '72, it was opened that way, but it is Lillimack County's money, and it should be Lillimack County. If that checking account was open in 1972, my guess is that it was, I don't even know if Mickey Killway was treasured '72, but that would be the signature card, you know, and that would be-
So we've just never caught it all these years?
Exactly, that, I mean, right.
Yep, okay.
Most likely, they have it on the books, though, like we see, we show it each year.
Yeah.
That, so there's 4,600, 4,800, and like Steve says, they're not going to worry about $1,000 here, $1,000 there, $5,000 there. The due diligence is we worry about that.
Yeah, okay.
So we make sure that if it says 48, and the next month it says 47, we make that entry. If it goes up to 52, that entry's made, you know, so that's, that they're in line.
Easier to track that way.
Correct.
So you, you were finance director when this all went down?
I was.
Okay, when you contacted these two, did you document that, or was that verbal?
I did not write down, I mean, I wouldn't normally write that down, I was told by, excuse me, I was instructed by the auditors to find out what this is. This typically would have been all handled by the treasurer's office, so when I found out what it was, I did go to John and Darcy in their office, if they recall, is that correct? Go for it, long as coming down and talking to you.
That's why you need to document stuff, because I'm hoping in the future, between our new finance director and the treasurer's office, we have a better working relationship, and we won't be in this boat again.
Good. I had one more question.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say that I share Mr. Peacock's view that this will be corrected for next year.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't find it, so I'm probably good. All right, is there any other, anything else on this before?
I do have a quick question.
Yep.
So Mr. Rado, would you like me to get Joanna Novak to make a statement, and Kathy Harrell to make a statement of when I met with them and what was said? Would you like that?
I need to catch some water over the bridge, I mean, just in future.
It doesn't sound like it's water, that's one of the reasons.
I come from the world, in my previous, I mean, you documented everything, it's called CYA, and we wouldn't be in this petition, you know? I'm not saying you did, I'm not saying you did, but it just, it looks bad. You got to document stuff.
Hey, just for clarification for tomorrow evening, this is on the agenda. Mr. Peacock is not available tomorrow evening, Mr. Paul is not available. I think we covered it, there's no issue, there's no reason for them.
We can cover it.
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, Steve, thank you.
I think we got a clear understanding.
And would you like John to be in tomorrow?
It's up to, it's up to John, I see tomorrow night, just, they're reporting out on the finance commission.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think, it's up to you, but I don't think so.
If four commissioners are not here, it may be helpful to him, at least an update from this afternoon's meeting there. And if you can make it, John, I think it'd be helpful for you to be there. But I'm seeing a reason for Steve or Paul to participate.
Can I ask just a quick question? I don't know. Is Steve still on the line?
Yeah.
Do you have, does Paul have notes that I reported to the treasurer and the chiefs, and then reported back to him with what was going to happen?
Probably, well-
Jackie, hang on a second.
Because I would have gone to district court, I would have met with the treasurer, and then told the auditors how we were going to fix and to reconcile this going forward.
Wouldn't normal protocol be that Evan or Paul would have contacted me directly? Steve, as in pass audits?
I believe from my correspondence with our team, they did reach out to the treasurer's office, and they were not given satisfactory answers as to what the account was and why it was off. That's why Paul made the executive decision to confer with Jed on this.
Thank you, sir.
You know, Jen, I'm looking at the cash work papers here, I, there is no notation on here, you know, county work papers aren't like law enforcement documents, they're very black and white, factual, and there's really no subjective comments written next to this account, other than the fact that the bank reconciliation was off by 156, and that she has been proposed to correct it.
Thank you for looking.
Thanks. Okay.
Yes, not a problem.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
So, third, and John, if you want to stay, Darcy, we kind of have a question of, the third, the third issue we had as the agenda was the fact that now we have just found out that the county is going to be partially responsible for these drain districts, that our drain commissioner is putting in all over the county.
Let me give an overview of it. John should state, there's some question that John and I talked about, I think Friday, that needs to be addressed with Mr. Christiansen. I'm certainly not an expert on drain fields, nor assessment districts, nor do I want to speak on Steve's behalf, but let me just give an overview as all three of you know. Steve Christian has come to the board on a pretty regular basis to give us updates on drain districts. They were very rare, I'm not sure Steve has been through this process before, maybe once in all time he's been the drain commissioner. So he's been coming here for the last, what, two, three years, probably?
Mm-hmm.
At least, and I know at all those meetings, Commissioner Lofter always asks the questions, is there a financial impact to the company? And I believe Steve's answer has always has been, no, the cost-
Repeatedly.
The cost will be covered by the people in the district. And so, and that was just, I think you asked it fairly recently also. So I received a call from Commissioner Lofter on Wednesday morning, very early Wednesday morning.
Late Tuesday night.
Late Tuesday night, but we did not answer the phone, so I called her back Wednesday morning. But that's, that's, but Mr. Christiansen and Brian Sensi at Salton went and met with the Solon Township supervisor Tuesday night at their request, they asked to meet with the supervisor. And that happened, and they were informed that there'd be a cost to Solon Township. The numbers vary, but between $100 and $150,000 dollars for the district, and they had no option but to pay that, and that could be spread out over 20 years. And so obviously, Commissioner Lofter was concerned about that, and so we had a call with Tim Perrone, the legal counsel, about the legal process, because they're not handling the legal part of the drain logistics. An attorney from, I believe Clark Hill handles that part, but we just, we just reviewed the law in terms of what authority the rank commissioner has, and really is up to the drain commissioner. The township board has no vote, nor does the county board have a vote on it, other than if the fact that you want to put our full credit behind it on. So that part is. The question we had is about where the legal process was followed, because there has to be a hearing of notice, and once the assessments are in those, are, once the people in the districts are informed with assessment, there has to be a 10-day appeal process. The notice of the assessment, we're processed Friday, they're being mailed out as we speak, I believe, and so we as the county have not received ours yet, neither has the township, but I did ask Steve, does this mean the county will also get an assessment? Because that, I believe, was a question that Commissioner Lofter has always asked from the very beginning, and he said, yes, there will be assessment. I asked him how much, he said the approximately $50,000 to $60,000, which the county has the authority, if they wish, to pass on a part, a portion, or all of it to the road commission. I double-checked with Steve this morning to see if he had an exact amount, and he does not yet, but he said it'll actually be probably for the county twice that amount. So the amount that the county will be assessed and township will be assessed, we've got the same, approximately $100,000 to $120,000. I asked him to give us the sperm numbers tomorrow evening. Mr. Christiansen, Mr. Sensi, and the legal counsel will be here tomorrow night at the meeting, because you have a late request then, so I didn't notify them. And I asked them if we can get at least our assessment amount, the accurate amount, by tomorrow evening. So the 10-day period starts when the individual or the unit of government gets their assessment notice. They have 10 days to appeal that, it's not where they have to, it's not whether they will be assessed or not, the appeal is on the amount, because by law, the drain commissioner has the sole authority to set the percentage that each unit of government and each property will be paid, or will be charged for the assessment. And each property owner, as well as each unit of government, can make that payment one time for a period of time up to 20 years. So we'll have more clarification, and they will all be here tomorrow night to answer your questions. But it was confirmed that there will be an assessment as of this morning. Mr. Christian said it'd be about $100,000 to $120,000 for the colony. So like I said, we have the option of part of that or all of it being assessed to the road commission. But obviously, I think this will be a surprise for them also.
Well, this is, this is, I understand this is a surprise for Lillimack Township, this was certainly a surprise for Solon Township, and it's certainly a surprise here at the county, because we had asked that question repeatedly, of the cost, and we were told repeatedly it would be the homeowners in that district. So when, when is this even begin to be due? Like, is it, this is start January 1, do we have to pay it right away?
Well, that's a good question.
The bills are being racked up monthly.
The following question is, when John and I were talking about this, I think Thursday, John told me as the county treasurer, Mr. Christian or Mr. Sensi have never approached him about-
We have not budgeted for this.
Or, or, but the technical part is the collection, so John, you want to talk about that?
Well, township didn't know about collection either, he hadn't informed them.
But John can explain the technical part of it.
I've never gone through a drain district and the initial setup, so my concern is who's going to administer the actual collection of the, the district, who's going to pay the bonds, how that is going to be accounted for. Obviously, with audit pressure on our side, it's going to be something specific to audit. You know that Steve does not have the resources internally to do it, so my concern is, is he having bond counsel in his forehead, or is he just going to pull back on the account? I have not had a price to, for what his intentions are, but those are some current issues that I've seen with the process so far.
It is my understanding that this would be on their winter taxes, is that correct? If it-
Do you have a supplemental, special assessment bill?
Yeah, okay, I can talk about that, because I'm actually, it's not a drain district, but it's a road district where I live on. I get a separate bill for that in September. I have option of paying it, if I don't pay it, it automatically is added to the winter taxes, which almost everyone does not pay it, they just wait till it comes to the winter taxes, and that's part of the tax bill. So I assume that's the same process. Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Ty.
Does the county not have any option of creating another assessment district and assessing the residents in that district for the, our portion of it?
That'd be a good question to ask Steve tomorrow night.
Well, township wants, has that very same question, so thank you for asking, I was going to mention that one tomorrow night. Yeah, they want to do the very same thing.
The thing is, though, whether a district is set up an assessment amount, there is no legal authority, there's no legal action required by the county or the township, we have no say how that's done. That strictly is up to the drain commissioner.
No, only in that-
And the appeal would have to go through a probate court.
So-
Just on the mark, not that it's settled. Is my understanding.
So yes, I hope to get some, some-
John, you were part of that dialogue with the council, did they send any thing?
All right. Okay, because now, I mean, we, we need to know when we have to come up with it, but this is something we haven't budgeted for either, so we need to find-
And like I said, it could be stressed out over 20-year period.
Yeah.
But they will be here tomorrow night, it will be a late addition, and Steve told me that it's a good possibility the attorney will be there with them. For sure, Steve and Brian Sensi will be here tomorrow night.
Well, so, you know, $9,000, $10,000 a year for the county, yeah, we can find it, but township's not necessarily, and that's a real concern I've got for that, so.
But the question is, can, I think the question, the US is legitimate.
Yeah.
Can the drain commissioner assess the amount that is located into government to the property owners?
Instead of the township.
And/or the county, which then we would have made the choice, how we split that if we choose to, with the road commission.
Okay.
It could be zero, it could be a hundred percent, but I'm guessing they're not aware of it too.
Well, and the problem with road commission is, it's still county, it's not, there are now people who benefit from it that will be paying for it, whether it's through the road commission or through the county, they're going to pay for it, whether they live down, you know, southwest of, southwest corner of the county is going to pay for this for someone down in Solon.
Well, the other issue is, is you know, if he's working on what, three or four other districts?
I, it's a very big concern.
So that would, I assume, be the same process and same potential liability-
Yeah.
-for the county, and then also is the actual technical part of the collection of the money and the fees and so forth.
Well, and I've gotten a couple of calls with this, because it's out in my, my community that this is going on, and, and that's what their, their concerns are, and, and so far there's, I haven't heard from anybody really happy that this is going down, but their question is, those districts are set up to benefit the health, safety, welfare of the whole community, and their question is, how does, I don't know how many homes are up there, 15 homes, to live on a hill benefit the whole community? It wasn't washing out a main road that the county's responsible for, so that's just some of the questions, we'll try to get some of them tomorrow night. So if we have nothing else on three then, that kind of covers, is there any other discussion items? Are there any other discussion items anybody wants to bring up? Yeah? Okay. Any board member comments? Okay, only thank you to Steve and Jenn and John and Darcy and everybody for coming today for this. Public comment? No? And, okay, motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.